Tom, 5:30, I call this meeting the Pittsburgh City Commission Order. Will you stand and join me in the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a proclamation tonight, Disability Mentoring Day. Would you join me if I may? Have a proclamation, whereas more than 1 million people with disabilities have entered the labor force since the passage of Americans with Disability Act in 1990, and whereas, as taxpayers, consumers, and workers, people with disabilities are contributing to our society and to their own fulfillment of the American dream, and whereas new generations of young people with disabilities are growing up in Pittsburgh, graduating from high school, going to college, preparing to participate in the workplace, and whereas both students and job seekers with disabilities have the right to maximize their potential by making the most of their intellect, talents, abilities, and the environment free of physical problematic and attitudinal barriers, and whereas Disability Mentoring Day provides an opportunity for students and job seekers with all types of disabilities to gain insight into career options by spending part of their day in the workplace shadowing an employee as he or she goes through a normal day on the job. Now therefore, I Chuck Munsel, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, to hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 2nd, 2014, as Disability Mentoring Day in Pittsburgh, and encourage all the citizens to recognize this enormous potential of people with disabilities and to work towards their full integration with the workforce.
Hi, I'm Luann Collier with Skill, and on behalf of the Disability Mentoring Day Committee, we'd like to thank Mayor Munsel and the city commissioners for their support. DMD is a national initiative that is a career development tool for high school students and young adults with disabilities. This is our ninth year here in Pittsburgh, and we couldn't do it without the support of the city and our local businesses and area colleges. We'll have approximately 200 to 225 people Wednesday, and we take part of the students and run them through basic stations on how to prepare for an interview, how to do online applications, mock interviews. Our seniors are touring three local businesses, Walmart, Vinylplex, and then the new technical school through Fort Scott Community College, and then they'll come back to the event and finish out the day with mock interviews. It's just an incredible day. It's a way to educate the students, to give them the tools that they need to have better success in the job field, to give them more self-confidence, and also to educate the employers. Because sometimes people, there's some fears and myths about hiring people with disabilities, and that's one of the basic goals of this day, is to help dispel those also. But thank you once again, we appreciate all the support that the city and the community gives us, and it is truly a community effort. My committee's made up of members from the inter-local USD 250 class, mosaic, and vocational rehab, so it's a great community effort. Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, my apologies, we skipped the invocation, and Commissioner Johnson was actually going to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
...step, is that okay if we go back one step?
Sure is.
That's pretty awkward, but it's a long agenda, we probably need all the help we can get.
Hey, I'm always on.
Well, do you want to rise with me while we pray? So it was supposed to be K. O. Nunu who was doing this, but he is out of town and sends his regrets that he can't be here to do it and asked me to do it instead, so I'm not nearly as dynamic or engaging as he is, but I'll give it a shot. Let us pray. God of grace, we join our voices with the voice of the 127 Psalm. If God doesn't build the house, the builders only build shacks. If God doesn't guard the city, the night watchman might as well nap. It's useless to rise early and go to bed late and work your worried fingers to the bone. Don't you know He enjoys giving rest to those He loves? As the psalmist says, your loving kindness is what makes all the difference. Without it, all our planning and careful watching and hectic schedule comes to nothing. Guide our leaders in all their work. Bless their labor and cause houses to be built in our city, not shacks. Guard our city and direct our efforts that we might be kept safe from evil that seeks to undo your blessings. We look forward to your rest, which you so generously give to those you love. Merciful God, we thank you for our children. They are indeed your best gift to us. They make our lives thrilled and present and give us something to look forward to in the future. Help us watch over them well. Grant that we may work together to provide them with all they need to prosper and achieve their God-given potential. Good school systems and great teachers, safe streets and trails, fun playgrounds and coaches, beds when night falls, and food when they are hungry. Bless our kids with caring parents whose love is shown in their presence. Protect our city's children from all harm, and may they rise and stand beside us when they are grown. May they put those who seek to do us harm to shame. We ask this through your most holy name with thanksgiving. Amen.
Since we're backing up tonight, let me back up, and I failed to mention Commissioner Mike Graham was unable to join us tonight. Moving forward, I open this portion of the meeting to public input. Anyone in the audience wants to come up and air their concern, this is now your time to do so. Seeing none, I close the public input portion of the meeting and move to consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed for discussion?
If there are none, I move to the floor.
Second. In motion to approve and second it, a real call vote.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ketterman?
Aye.
Munsel?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Special presentation, Memorial Auditorium North Lawn Master Plan. Pittsburgh State University Construction Management Majors Connor Ashburn, Greg Roberts, Chris Patterson, Jamie Roth, Justin Garcia will present their North Lawn Master Plan for Memorial Auditorium and Convention Center.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for giving us this time. Oftentimes, when city staff is discussing the downtown and events that happen down there, we're wishing that we had a place that we could gather without closing Broadway. So that's been a discussion quite often, and as we look at the possibility of having more downtown residents and larger demand for outdoor weddings, which I've definitely seen in the park over the last several years, and really just a place for family and friends to gather, we realize we've got the North Lawn of Memorial Auditorium that really is sitting as a blank slate of possibilities of things that we could do. So this year, we asked the Pittsburgh State University Construction Class to work with us, with Jason Huffman and the memorial board members, to come up with a concept of what we could do with the North Lawn, to make it a friendly gathering place for the community and for events. So they have worked hard this semester to create this master plan, and I'm going to let them present it, and I thank them for the work that they have done with us. They've been very patient, as we've revised it a few times. And originally, in the 80s, when the auditorium was renovated, there was a North Lawn plan, but it did not get developed, so it's nice to go back and see what we can do to bring something like that to life. This is just a concept at this time, so note that it's not a budgeted plan right now. They do have a budget that they're going to present for the plan, but it's not funded at this time, so without further ado, we'll introduce the building. Well, I'll let them introduce themselves, but...
Just remember, guys, when you're talking, try to be in front of the podium, or we're probably not going to catch you at home, and then they'll be calling you on us.
Thank you for having us. On behalf of PSU Construction, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and to present our master plan for Memorial Auditorium Outdoor Facility. Before the start of this project, we were approached by Kim Vogel and Jason Huffman, as Kim said, to kind of develop the space and see what we could come up with as far as an idea to utilize a space that does sit vacant as of now. Here's the current space. We've been working closely throughout the semester with Kim and Jason, along with other city officials. We just presented to planning and zoning last night, so Dexter and Troy have been very helpful with this as well. I could take a moment to introduce our team. My name is Chris Patterson, I'm the project manager.
I'm Jamie Roth, I'm the virtual construction designer.
Justin Garcia, project estimator.
Connor Ashburn, I'm the superintendent.
I'm Greg Roberts, I'm the project engineer.
And without further ado, I'll let Jamie kind of take over and discuss the design.
Okay, I first want to start off with a overall plan here. You can see a retaining wall, a stage, a stage right here, bathrooms, concessions, and catering area. There's three exits and entrances, stairs, and there's two ramps. This is a view of the stage and the open area. This is your southeast entrance, it's a ramp. This is the other ramp, this is a little bit wider. This also gives a clear view of the catering area. People can have a buffet, they're to have a wedding or something. This is the last entrance, stairs leading into it, directly into the stage, bathrooms in the far corner. This gives you another view, obviously, from the stage. Men on the left, women on the right, concessions, and your catering area, and all of your open area. Another conceptual rendering of the stage. This is from when someone would be sitting down at the catering area, having a beverage or resting under the shade. This gives you kind of an open view of the bathroom and catering and concession area, women, men, and your concessions, and your open space for catering. This gives you just a different view of it. Another conceptual idea was to put a pergola on the south side of the Memorial Auditorium. It contains benches for those who want to go out and sit and enjoy the daylight. Without further ado, I'm going to, sorry, this is from a street view. If you were passing by a vehicle, this is what you would see of the pergola.
I'm sorry, would you acclimate me back to where that one, the slide-back one? Where is that?
This is on the south, this is on the south side of the building, and it's when-
Oh, it's down in the-
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks, okay.
And that's what it would look like if you were driving by. I'm going to hand it off to Justin Garcia, our estimator.
Thank you for taking the time out of your day to spend this with us. So we came up with this schematic estimate over the last couple of months. Again, the key word there is estimate. This was what we had come up with. So on the south end, which we expect to be the first phase of the project, we estimated the pergola with the benches to be $5,500. Of course, your North Lawn area, this is where the bulk of the work's going to be going on. We have this broken up into five different categories. You've got your site work and drainage, which includes your retaining wall, your fence, and your drainage, of course. You have your electrical, which includes a transformer, three 200-amp services, wiring, and of course, perimeter lighting, your restroom and catering area, and your, of course, the stage. So the site work, we came in with an estimate of $75,500. Electrical, $155,000. Restroom and catering, $47,500. And then, of course, the outdoor stage, $130,000, which comes to a grand total of $413,500. Here's just the labor savings, labor cost savings that you can earn from doing this through PSU Construction versus a local general contractor. Estimated to be around $650,000 with your local GC. As the aforementioned price was, $413,500, which is a total savings of 36 percent, or $236,500. So this is what we've ultimately come up with over the past couple of months.
Time, we'd like to open the floor for any questions you may have about our master plan.
How many Pitt State students would be working on this project?
It would vary, basically how we would see this going. We only have so many students in the construction department, so we're going to have to phase out the project. It's something we'll have to decide at a later time. We'll base that on how much work we think we can perform in a semester's time, and that'll also go along with the funding that is present to do.
That was my next question, what's the timeframe on this? And it looks like, if any of it's to be done, none of the construction will hamper activities at Memorial Auditorium that normally take place.
Right.
How many people do you estimate could comfortably participate in activities in that area?
Occupancy is just under 1,000.
Under 1,000?
Wow.
Just under, that's a lot.
That's awesome.
960, approximately.
What in your planning, what were some of the things that you heard the most? What were some common themes that you heard about people's vision and activities?
Well, first you have to understand, at this point, we're kind of at a schematic design phase, so to get to really your construction documents and get developed to that point is obviously going to take some more time, but probably another group of gentlemen, I assume, will be presenting to you next semester, this time in the spring. And that'll give them a chance to kind of get down to the nitty-gritty questions that we didn't necessarily, don't necessarily have answers to at this point in time. With that being said, a lot of those, that gray area, we are not sure about at this time, we do have a built-in contingency for that into that estimate that you did see.
Are you all graduating? Everybody?
Fingers crossed that we can survive the last few weeks.
How many days? Well, if this is any example of the work you've done, this is great. I mean, this is real-life stuff, and this helps us so much, even in a concept portion, because sometimes we don't have the luxury of having staff have the time to do things like this, but sometimes we need a picture and we need a number. So thank you very much for doing this for us. I hope it was helpful to you, too, to get to see what it's like to work with lots of different people.
Yes, it's been very beneficial, and I know for me personally, it's been a great learning experience, I'm sure the rest of the guys can share that as well, so.
Would your construction department out there also be able to do the site work and drainage work, or would that have to be done by somebody else?
Mostly, your general construction, we can do things like your electrical work and your plumbing, that is something that we'll have to have a subcontractor complete that work.
There's not really much major grading going on, so most of the site work, we would be comfortable in handling ourselves.
The site, as of right now, is relatively flat. We'll be bringing in dirt to fill up around the retaining wall, so there won't be a whole lot of site work we really have to worry about.
You can't really envision the west side, but it seems to me that the driveway goes down. Is there, there's a wall there that-
Yes.
-would be the back of the restroom area?
Correct.
So you wouldn't have to change anything there?
No, not at this time. Though we did discuss slightly, maybe straightening out that drive, because it's kind of hard. So I've heard to get a truck down in there. I haven't had the luxury of trying myself, but-
Yeah, it's tricky. I bet there's been a few claims against that wall right there, yeah.
But if that were to happen, we wouldn't have to relocate the structure from where it is in the plan now. We may have to adjust that ramp to that entrance that is on that corner.
So much for doing this for us. It just really helps us as we plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent job, guys.
Best of luck to you. Congratulations on your graduation, too.
Thanks.
How many of you stand here after you graduate?
I believe we're all picking up.
Come back sometime, come back sometime.
I believe we're playing on it.
Go make your millions and then come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to your teachers, too. Thank you.
All right. Consider the following. Resolution Number 1180. Consider approving Resolution Number 1180 and amending Resolution Number 1163 establishing the equivalent resident unit ERU rate and the undeveloped property rate, and provides effective date of January 1st, 2016.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If you recall, back in early May, we had our working day and we discussed a possible utility rate increase in 2016 to keep up with deferred maintenance and those types of things. And then, when we had our budget meetings in July and then adopted the budget in August, we adopted the budget with a 1 percent utility rate increase in it. And what this is, is the legal mechanisms to allow us to do that, beginning with January 1st of 2016. There's three separate documents here, or legal documents. One's a resolution for the stormwater fee, and then there's an ordinance, a G ordinance, for each water rates and the sewer rates. And also, at this time, I'm requesting that we, our current water rate structure, just on the water rates itself, not the other two, because they didn't have all these tiers in them, the water rates had 15 tiers that was spread out over, up to 200,000, I think, cubic feet per month as a user. And I did analysis on the last two years for 14 and 15 of consumption usage based on our tier structure, and the way it came out is tiers 12, 13, and 14, and 15 contained no consumption usage at all by any of our customers. Tiers 9, 10, and 11 had minimal consumption, and that minimal consumption was strictly industrial, outside-city limit usage, so there was no inside-the-city usage at all up past tier eight. So I'm recommending that we remove the tiers 9, or tiers 9 through 15 on the water rate structure as well at this time, to simplify our water rates ordinance. Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
Question for Jamie.
Thanks for doing all the groundwork, hand up.
Thank you, Jamie.
There'll be three things that you'll have to approve. You'll have to, you'll do this resolution first, and the next item will be an ordinance you'll have to approve, and then another ordinance after that that'll have to be approved.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1180?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance Number G 1231. Consider approving of Ordinance Number G 1231 amending Section 82-111 of the Pittsburgh City Code fixing rates and minimum charges for water service. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Then moved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance Number G 1232. Consider approval of Ordinance Number G 1232 amending Section 82-141 of the Pittsburgh City Code fixing rates and minimum charges for ser-
Service.
Is the motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Ordinance Number G 1242. Consider approving of Ordinance Number G 1242 creating Sections 2-40, 2-41, and 2-42 of the Pittsburgh City Code governing the terms and election of members of the governing body and changing the date of the elections for members of the governing body and repealing Section 2-31.
Mayor, Commissioners, in 2015, the state legislature, as you know, changed the, excuse me, the date that the terms expire from April to November, in odd years, as we will now have our elections, and there's several other things that go along with all this. So Henry and I, before the year was over, wanted to review statutes, find out what we needed to do, and give you some recommendations on how to, what ordinances we would need to pass to appropriately get back onto the schedule, where there's a calendar where everybody knows. When they're getting elected and how long their terms are, it all seems like we're probably making this up, that we actually have to go through this, but every city in the state's going through the same exercise, as well as several other jurisdictions. What you have up on the board in front of you, excuse me, on the screen in front of you are your current commissioners, the original term, what the expiration date was planned to be, and then after the state law, the new expiration date. So in order to address people asking that question of when does your term end, we recommend passing the following ordinance to address the terms when you take office and the nominating petitions, which is also part of it. Are there any questions? I mean, this would be the first part of it, would, basically, if you think about it, it's a seven-month change from April to November, but then they've also, usually you have an election in April, and then you take office in April. What we're looking at now is there'd be an election in November, and you would take office the second Monday in January. So there's actually nine months there that's unaccounted for, and so that's what, by this ordinance, one thing this ordinance would address, it would extend your terms with what's on the board, giving everybody that extra time, rather than the alternative, I think, which would be to have, and I haven't really talked this through with Henry, an election for nine months? I mean, I don't even know if that's practical with what we paid for the last election, but we thought this would be the easiest thing to recommend.
This is a one-time fix for the change in the elections, then?
As far as this particular bill, that's correct, yes. It doesn't mean that before April of, or really before November of 2018, that there won't be another change, but this is the change that's been, that's been done. This bill is 40 pages long. It repealed 120 separate state statutes, so to say that it took a lot of reading and a lot of, I guess, deliberation in bringing this to you is an understatement, so.
And the final piece of the ordinance is the nominating petitions. This has traditionally been a percentage of the, what is it, the law previously required that nominating petitions be signed by at least 1 percent of the qualified electors. We asked Henry to go back and see what that number actually was. The cities now must set this figure by ordinance, and what we're recommending is the signatures be set at just 25 electors. That's basically very close to what 1 percent has traditionally been, and it simplifies it. So that's the third piece of this ordinance, if you will.
And you don't have to file by nominating petition, you can still pay the filing fee. The filing fee is going to be increased to $20, I think it was $10 previously, but, so there's still, you still have the two options to actually file for city commission suits.
Was the filing fee set by state statute, or was that a change that we made?
It's a state statute.
I don't, I don't understand the last part. So are we, that, the nominating part? I was with you until the nominating part.
Previously, that had been set by state statute, the 1 percent of the electors who had voted in the last citywide election. Now, the cities must set that figure by ordinance, and so when Tammy and I looked at what traditionally has been that 1 percent figure, it actually was probably, it ranged from anywhere to 15 to 25, depending on how many people had voted in the last citywide election, and so we selected 25. That's not set in stone. If you all believe that a different figure would be more appropriate, we can- If you all believe that a different figure would be more appropriate, we can make that
So the action, I'm sorry, I thought I understood this, but I guess I don't. The action we're taking tonight is to reset the, what we see on the screen, reset the timeframe, one.
Yes.
And two is the nominating thing.
That's correct. We have to do that.
And that's in the same, the same ordinance?
That's all in the ordinance, yes.
It's all in 1242?
The, yes, the nominating petition section is in 1242, yes.
Okay. And then just the fact that our names are on here, it feels kind of funny just saying, yeah, I'll give myself another nine months, or on the opposite side, why would I give myself another nine months? The, so we're really not talking about our names, we're talking about the positions each of us hold and resetting the timeframe for that.
That is correct. And the new, the new law also addresses vacancies, which that has changed as well. In the event that there would be a vacancy on the commission, if you all don't appoint a new commissioner within 60 days, then we have to have an election.
And our alternative now is to let our terms run out, the April of 17 terms, right? And then do nine months for three people?
What the league has said is that, under Kansas case law, you know, actual cases that have been decided, if we take no action, your terms are going to be extended anyway.
We're just lucky like that.
Well, and that's why it's important to note that, I know it feels weird that you're voting to extend your own term, but your own term, your term's going to get extended anyway. I hope people aren't looking at it like that.
Yeah. And what was the hope of the legislature in doing this? Do we know the intent?
I know originally, I think, one of the bills would have changed your elections to coincide with the general elections, I believe, but the league lobbied against that change, and this is what the result was.
Greater voter turnout was the overriding reason, while this may not achieve that. This is the first step in getting people to understand that, okay, all elections are in November, so you should have more people turn out, because apparently people are forgetting to turn out in April.
Okay.
And one other thing that this law did is, is it gave governing bodies the option to make city elections partisan if they chose to do so.
Really?
This particular ordinance does not.
We didn't recommend that in the ordinance before you today.
That's understandable. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And do we have any action on that?
Any further questions?
Just one question. Now, on the, the off chance was probably is not going to happen, if they come back in next session and say, no, we screwed up, we don't want to do that, then we just revoke this one and go back to the old one, or?
Well, I doubt that if there's a change, that there won't be some additional dictating of what cities will need to do. And so we'd just have to evaluate that when it happened, and hopefully bring you something that would comply with that.
I'll let you make a motion.
Oh, moved and approved.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Move to, motion to approve and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks for figuring the 40 pages out.
CHPG, Inc., Business Advisor Agreement. Consider staff recommendation to enter into agreement with CHPG, and with CHPG will provide benefit, consultation, administration, communications, and human resource compliance services for a total annual fee of $40,000 to be paid in installments of $3,333.33 monthly.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, we did skip item E. Let's go ahead, since you read item F, and I don't want to ever make you read any one of these things over again. Let's go ahead and take care of item F, but let's make sure we go back and take care of item E, if you will.
All right. Sorry about that. My mistake.
So regarding item F, Gary, come on up. Gary Davis is with Power Group. He's joined by, obviously, Jamie Clarkson. I want to give you a little bit of background before we get into this. Our previous challenges over a year ago, obviously, our employee benefits is a huge cost center for the city of Pittsburgh. And as we see annual increases in that and don't take action on the revenue side, that creates an imbalance that leads to our structural imbalance, and thereby we end up spending our savings. And so anything we can do to reduce the cost of employee health insurance without reducing the benefit that they receive, because they are extremely valuable, and we want them to have, not only be compliant with ACA and all these other things going on, but we want them to have good insurance. That's part of a perk of working for the city. So what we found out is, we really couldn't bid our insurance without proper claim data, and we couldn't get our claim data from our current provider at the time. So we met with several consultants to help us work our way through this. I think we have a pretty talented staff, but this is one of those things that's just a little bit beyond your head for most HR directors. Out of that interview process, we ended up creating a relationship with the Power Group, who Gary's with. They're basically an expert in the area. We bid the insurance provider at that point with their help. We also selected and unbundled services. I won't get into all of the knickknacks about what's involved in unbundled service, but for the most part, we parted ways with the provider we had, and we went with an unbundled services at the recommendation of Gary and his group. They talked about savings when we came before you last year and talked to you about switching. We had a chart that showed potential savings at somewhere in a quarter of a million dollars between the four different parts of our insurance. At this point, we met with them last week, a couple weeks ago, reviewed where we are. We're still not 12 months into the plans. We don't have a year of claims, but we can make some projections. It looks like we're headed down a path where we'll definitely exceed saving the 250. I'd hate to say it in a public meeting on a microphone that's being recorded, any number, because I don't want to ever get held accountable to that, but I think we're in a good place. And I think it says a lot about the relationship that we've created. Currently, this is to bring you up to speed, we have had HR staff turnover, so we currently have struggled with that position, keeping somebody in it permanently. We've got limited expertise, as a result, at the city of this model, and the first year benefits under this model, like I said, is still kind of an unknown. The ACA, the Affordable Care Act requirements, the reporting for that are very demanding, and quite frankly, I'm looking at Jamie's hair, he's got some gray hair, he had some when he started, but it's really taken a toll. I mean, we've talked to private companies, we've talked to everybody we know right now, and they're all really struggling with the ACA, and just making sure that the reporting that you need to give to the IRS is in there. So while we think that can make it kick down the road a little bit, it's still something we need to consider, and we need to take very serious, and it's not a skill set that we have at the city right now. We will have a year of claims data pretty soon. We will bid our insurance again pretty soon, but in the meantime, it seems like the most prudent thing is for us to continue a relationship with Power Group. Gary's company has done a ton of work for us. They've helped us understand how the unbundled services would work. We reviewed our current claim data with them, and they projected out what the costs will be. They've negotiated with our providers on the bill payments and the agreements, so we actually are paying bills, you know, at a cheaper rate that's advantageous to our taxpayers and our citizens and our employees, excuse me. And we've evaluated our current plan for adjustments during this open enrollment period that we just entered. So the recommendation before you today is, let's renew a contract for 12 months with the Power Group to help lead us through what's the next big hurdle, and probably the last one, I think, for a while, which would be, let's bid this insurance one more time, having actual claim data, knowing what our program should be, how we can best address the claims that we have, so we are self-funded, and then award that bid to somebody. Hopefully, I have a feeling it's probably going to be very similar to the one we currently have. It seems to be working out well and holding our costs down, but we will definitely need some expertise in getting through this last hurdle, if you will. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gary. I hope I left you something to talk about, but I don't want you up here selling. He's already sold himself to us. I wanted to do a little sales job to you about his expertise and how valuable they've been as a partner for this previous engagement. So Gary, thanks for being here.
Thanks, Darren. Appreciate being here tonight. And as Darren said, I mean, we made some recommendations last year that the city did, and at this point in time, these seem pretty sound recommendations in terms of where you're running with the plan, without getting through numbers. I think Darren indicated you're probably going to well exceed what the savings were that we'd indicated at the time. But it became apparent, as, making those recommendations, we felt an obligation to, over the course of the past six months, take a look at and help the city wherever possible in terms of loose ends, in terms of reporting, and contracts, and things of that nature that came up. And as Darren said, going into this next year, a lot goes on behind the scenes to make sure a plan, especially an unbundled approach, that all the pieces work together to make sure we can get the best plan possible. And that's what our company does, and we've got a very talented team behind us that work on behalf of the city in terms of making sure that you've got the very best plan at the very best cost for your employees.
Any questions, any concerns, any, we don't know what you're talking about? I know it's a lot thrown at you, but health insurance is just huge right now. It's something we've spent a lot of time trying to become experts about, and it's something we will spend a lot of time in the future, making sure that not only are the costs controlled, but I do think it's critical that we don't just pass it on to the employees or reduce that benefit to the employees unless we have to. I mean, in the end, we're going to do what we have to to run the city, but we don't want that to be our first option, and it hasn't been.
So we're approving the agreement with you. Does this replace an existing agreement?
Well, unfortunately for Gary's company, we had a very small engagement, and we've long since gone past that, and we have continued to call, and they've continued to answer, and I continue to put them off, saying, we will at some point work on a new agreement, and we're there. So no, this isn't replacing any existing agreement, but we've had a continuous, I don't know when the other one, the other one was very short and very specific.
That was prior to the change. You helped us look at the whole system.
Yes, ma'am. It expired in December last year, so it was a short-term project.
It was focused around bidding and going through those bids and coming up with a new.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so this is not replacing anything.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions?
I'll listen to you. Moved and approved.
Moved and second. Then moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion carries, four to one.
Thanks, Gary. Good job, bud.
Don't forget E, Mayor.
Thanks a lot.
Don't forget to go back to E.
Back to E. Thank you.
I was looking here. It's resolution number 1181. Consider approval of resolution number 1181 supporting the low-income housing tax credit application to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation to be submitted by Point Royal Development in the construction of multi-phase scattered-size infill housing development.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have with me Skip Motzenbacher from Point Royale Development. And before I turn it over to him to speak a little bit about what he intends to do here in Pittsburgh, I kind of wanted to set the stage. So some of the goals of our housing department is to address dilapidated rental housing, also to increase the stock of senior housing. It's a challenge that I face to address the dilapidated structures, and I have to balance that with also increasing the amount of low-income housing available, so that we don't price a lot of our citizens out of the community. So in conversations with Skip and his partner, Tom, we figured out a way that we could kind of do both, increase low-income, single-family homes, as well as address senior housing. So what you have in front of you is a resolution that, upon approval, allows Point Royale Development to, or do you say Royal? It sounds silly to say that word. Anyway.
You said it correct the first time.
I said it correct. Okay. Point Royale Development to apply for the tax credits. And then, once they are allocated the tax credits, if and when, then we'll come back with a development agreement and have a lengthier conversation. But I did want to give Skip an opportunity to show you the style of housing that they're looking at, potential locations, et cetera. So turn it over to you.
Well, thanks very much. I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening. You see two different names up here, predominantly because we have a development company, which is Point Royale Development. We also have a management company, which is Mid-American Management. So when you develop a community like we do, we actually see through to manage that property for the full duration, because ultimately, what we're talking about here for this community, for the city of Pittsburgh, is to build homes that are single-family homes. As Becky already mentioned, some of them are for individual families, some would be specifically for seniors. And it's two real, it's what we call a scattered-site development, so we've got it in multiple places, and it really is two different types of developments. The ultimate goal is that it is a home ownership entry for people. So while we do need to manage it for the duration of the development, at a certain point, that does come out of this program, and it does become an area where people can then purchase this as their own individual home. So I wanted to address that right up front. Let me just explain real quick. We've got two different sites, and specifically, this would be the first one. And I'll just use the names, because the names were just how we identify with each one. This is the Edwards site, which is up on 31st, just west of Scotty Drive. It's really between 31st and Atkinson. This is designed to be single-family homes, so this is one of two sites for the scattered site. The second is what we refer to as the McGeorge location, which is here on 23rd Street, really between Rouse and Tucker. They would all be the same style homes for what we are, for what we're creating, which is a three-bedroom, two-bath.
Can you, can you, can you at least, for the people at home, can you blow both those slides to full screen? Because they're not, I don't think they're going to know. I bet they can guess where the McGeorge site is, because we all know where Ralph lives, but it'd be nice if you could actually.
Where's the, does that help? It seems to be a little bit of a delay here.
If we put it in presentation mode, you can probably get the whole screen. Jay's looking at it.
Where was that? Right here?
Yeah.
I just think, show them just for a second, even if you don't get to go back to them in full screen.
Okay. Perfect. There's a pointer. Okay, great. So I'll go.
Sorry, Skip.
No, that's fine. Okay, so we'll go back. So here's the Edwards site again, so you can see this a little bit closer, sort of, what you use as the button?
The middle one.
Middle one. Okay, very good. So here's the entrance on 31st Street. While this was designed, this is all preliminary, but while this is designed, you can see it's a pass-through street, and it looks like it's a complete pass-through street up to Atkinson. It really is just being designed for emergency access here at the top. So it really isn't a complete drive-through. All community access would happen down here along 31st. This would just be for emergency access only, is what the plan is. Obviously, if the city so desired, we could certainly do a cul-de-sac, as was done here on Scotty Drive. We were just trying to maximize the use of the actual land itself. Again, that's the Edwards location. The next is the McGeorge location. Again, this is Rouse, this is Tucker, and here we are on 23rd Street, a total of nine homes. Currently plotted for 25 miner shacks, but we thought that might be too small. So, thanks for laughing. Really, so these two are together. I'm going to zip down a couple of slides and come back to the other senior development to catch up, because I'd like to show you, when we do a three-bedroom, two-bath home, recently, we did these in Iowa, Kansas, predominantly, they're mostly all brick, and, you know, have a garage, and approximate square footage is around 1,400 square feet. So it's a very nice home, and, you know, it's all, you know, dual-pane glass, Energy Star appliances, so on and so forth. It's very nice construction. We go back, actually, any questions about that particular?
What would the price point be on those houses?
To build them, or ultimately, what they would sell for?
What they would sell for?
Likely, what they would end up selling for, in today's dollars, would be around $130,000. a hundred and thirty thousand. They cost more than that to build, but likely that's what they would sell for, in today's dollars. If I go back to the second site, or the second proposed development, this one is really geared to be more for seniors. So for seniors means fifty-five years of age and older. And this looks very dense in this particular area. This is the medical center here. This is Michigan. This is Thirtieth Street. This is Twenty Ninth Street. This is really done very preliminary. We've already gotten some feedback that we would need to change different things. But you can tell that the footprint of these homes is in fact smaller, as it is on this site as well in comparison. And the reason for that is that the, these would be senior homes. They're two-bedroom, one-bath, with one-car garage. So think of it as more of a ro-style home, something that's more conducive to somebody who is just looking for maintenance-free living. New home, you know, good quality, low maintenance, because we're maintaining the property for them, and obviously something that's a little bit smaller. What we particularly like about this is that it's close to the medical facility. As a point of reference, Walmart is over here in that particular zone. I think you guys know where this is. The, uh, the Miller site is about three blocks south. So in fact, this is still Michigan right here, while this is grand, and this is Twenty Sixth Street coming into this. So we did specifically design this to not have a, a pass-through, as to create additional traffic on Michigan, but rally, really just create this so that it's, it's tied in for the community itself. Let me give you an example of what these may look like. So I'm not a huge fan of this one. This is what we had available, but you can tell it's, it's a smaller footprint, a two-bedroom, one-bath, single-car garage. We're likely going to move more towards something like this, albeit this shows it as a fourplex building. And, and this isn't a fourplex by any stretch. So, you know, pardon us for not having everything completely done. But you can tell here with the, with the actual floor plan, that we're talking about two-bedroom, one-bath, you know, living room, kitchen, obviously, and, you know, one-car garage, dedicated just for seniors. One thing I do want to jump back and show you, just to give you an example as well, because everything that we do is meant to be, you know, really good quality. We've got, in the past, we've used laminate flooring for the main areas. They've got some other really good quality products right now that are more vinyl style, but they actually look like hardwood, extremely durable, and we generally use that for the main areas in the house. And, and then, so there's an example, let's say, of our kitchens, you know, microwave, dishwasher, disposal refrigerator. All of that's included. Generally, we have ceiling plant, ceiling fans, as well as window treatments and whatnot. So, uh, just to give you, you know, an example of the quality of the type of product that we're building.
You stated that these homes could be eventually owned by the occupants.
That it, yeah, that would be.
The senior, how would the fourplex?
Well, the fourplex, that was just as a, that was just an elevation rendering. That's all. It's not, everything we're doing is a single-family home.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the price for seniors, what would that?
It's likely going to be less than a hundred thousand in today's dollars.
And the property maintenance, well, how much would that run a month?
Well, while these are being leased, and, and Point Royale, and ultimately Mid-America is managing them, I mean, there is no additional maintenance cost, because we are the onsite property manager, and we have our own maintenance team. So it's, it really is, I mean, it's designed as maintenance-free living. And so the good news, there's two different things really happening here. So for a period of fifteen years, we're really the onsite manager, we're the onsite maintenance. We take care of the community itself, period. Ultimately, when you get to that fifteen-year period, what ends up happening is, is that people get credit towards the purchase price based upon how long they've actually lived in the unit. They don't have to be an original resident, so they don't have to start leasing it from year one, but for the first five years that they live there, they get four percent credit per year towards the purchase of the home. For the additional ten years, let's say somebody lived there all fifteen years, those first five years, they get four percent per year. The, the next ten years, they would get two percent per year. That's a total of a forty percent credit towards the actual cost of the home at that time if they're going to buy it. So what's wonderful is, is it really is an entrance for people into homeownership. Gives them a great discount. From a manager's perspective, for us creating this community, what we see is then we have people who reside in this community who think of it as their home, and are better apt to take care of it and everything else. So it really is a, it's a great program.
For the time that it's leased, do you have an idea of what that would run for the residents, like monthly rent?
Ultimately, we've got to do everything based upon what we call a market study, which is part of us going through the whole application process. I would likely say any of the homes that we're talking about would rent for six hundred dollars a month, or potentially less.
Have you purchased these sites, or this has not been done yet?
What site, I'm sorry?
Like the, what you said, the Edwards site?
Yes, sir.
You already own them?
We have it under contract, yes.
Have you talked to the surrounding neighbors, their thoughts of this type of development?
We haven't gone, we haven't done a specific, you know, door-by-door knock to anybody. I, you know, looking at the surrounding community and looking at the types of homes that we're going to be developing, I, I can't imagine that there would be anybody who would really have a problem, you know? Because it's, as I've, as I've showed the pictures, one of those pictures, like, even on our website, you could go look at what was recently developed, let's say, in Iowa, Kansas. It's a very, very nice community, you know, fifty-nine homes, all brick, and, you know, very, it's been a very good thing for that community.
On these, on the senior housing, has there ever been any, like, consideration to having, like, more than one bathroom in those? Because I know if I was ever to move into one of them, my wife would have a fit if we could have one bathroom.
Interesting that you even bring that up. There, there may be some pending regulations out there that talk about having a minimum of one and a half baths. I don't know if those apply to the state of Kansas. Obviously, we're based in Springfield, Missouri, so we're dealing with a number of different state regulations. Always something up, up for consideration. So, absolutely. And I understand your concern.
I have a couple of questions for Becky. The, you may have said this at the beginning, but this fits in, I see in the resolution with what we did last time, with the RID.
Correct.
Is that what we're calling it, a RID?
That is what we're calling it.
So this, these are three of the highlighted locations you showed us last time.
Or potentially four, I think, because they're, they're four separate scattered sites. So yeah, it is.
And the timeframe that the state issues, the LITC?
I defer to Skip.
Sure. So applications get turned in in the month of February, early February. Awards are generally issued in the month of May. So we're talking about February 2016, May of 2016. Generally, we would get started with construction sixty to ninety days post-award, and you would expect to see these properties then leasing up sometime during the summer of 2017.
And if you're just awarded a, a portion of your request, do you have a prioritized say?
We would almost defer to KHRC, Kansas Housing, you know, Corporation on that, just because, you know, sometimes it's tied into the market study. What is the real need? Is family housing show up slightly higher demand than senior housing, or vice versa? And sometimes it's also dependent upon the site, the location. And so I don't, you know, from our work perspective as a developer, you know, we would, we would do everything if we were allowed. So.
And is it right that we can only pass a resolution for one developer? And so we are, we are tonight saying we're, we're putting our resolution, our recommendation behind this project. Is that right?
It's my understanding that we could pass a, a resolution for multiple developers. We currently have a resolution that's still active that was passed, I believe, last year for Redwood Development. So that is still active, and they may still submit application. Going to be speaking with that gentleman next week. However, the property management piece is pretty important, because this, these homes are going to be in, in our community for fifteen years under, uh, management. And so in doing research the way that I do, I've called many other communities where Mid-America Management has these projects already established, and received glowing feedback about the skill and the quality of the property management, of maintaining the properties, of maintaining the, the tenant relationships. And so the, the support that I would like to develop within our community would be for a, a Point Royale Development that would then be managed by Mid-America.
Other questions I have?
Other questions? Is there motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
And move. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Motion carries.
Thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Skip.
Seller property. Staff is requesting authorization to sell property located east of the Kansas City Southern Railroad tracks, east of the rugby fields on South Rouse, to Joel Van Beesler for an amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
Mayor, Commissioners, there's another map in front of you, thanks to Jay, and his quick work. As you know, earlier today, we exchanged land with Pitt State, finalized the deal. This thirteen-point-seven acres is identified in yellow on the map. It's contiguous with the, the property owner's current property. It's basically landlocked between their property and the property that now we've acquired. It's, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call anything scrub brush. It's, it's got trees on it. It's not something that will be, uh, developed. It's probably not even developable. It's got a river, a little creek that runs through it. It's prone to flood. It's of interest to the property owner because of its contiguous to the land that he currently has. It's an opportunity for us to, uh, sell it, and we had it appraised. We took the higher amount, and that was the fair market value that we offered to the property owner. That's the deal. It's before you right now. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Is there motion to approve the sale of this property? Second?
I'll move, please. Second.
And then moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Motion carries.
Thanks. Thanks, Jay.
Economic Development Service Agreement. Consider approving of the Economic Development Service Agreement, including Exhibit A between the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce and the City of Pittsburgh, in which your chamber will provide the service related to the location of industry and manufacturing business in the city for the year beginning November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor, Commissioners, with us is Blake Benson, as you know. A little history, if you will. In December 2012, the city first entered into a contract with the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce to provide economic development services. Since then, we annually renew, or review the contract and adjust the scope of services to reflect the work which we think needs to be done in the upcoming year. The agreement before you today is the result of several months of you meeting and discussing and tweaking that scope of services. And I think Blake was in the room for most of that. We've had some pretty good discussions. The updated scope of work calls for specific services to be provided, I think more specific than we've had in the past. They're related to attraction and recruitment of industrial, manufacturing, and retail businesses of all types to locate and/or grow within the geographic boundaries of the city, as well as promoting and developing ongoing and substantial contacts with existing businesses that are located within the city, something that I think we all believe is critical. Our focus continues to be attracting new businesses, creating new businesses within the community, and retaining and expanding our current businesses. I, I thank each of you for the time you put in in the last three months, basically reviewing the scope of services so we can get it right. I think we've taken this agreement to a new level, and as Pittsburgh continues to grow, we must make the most of every opportunity we have to create better-paying jobs and increase opportunities for all of our residents. And I think that's something we achieved in this latest negotiation, and I appreciate all your efforts. And with that, we have Blake here to answer your questions, and appreciate your time.
I guess I'll start, and you might not be able to answer this, Blake, but how much of the sixty thousand that we pay the chamber has paid to you to do economic development for the city?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Yes, sir.
Activities for 2016, the fifty thousand industrial market assessment. How many industries in the past few years have you, have had contact with you that this assessment would have benefited?
Say it again, please.
This fifty thousand dollar industrial market assessment. How many industries in the past two years have you had contact with that this assessment would have benefited?
And I, Mayor, I don't have an exact number. I would tell you that, that the data that, that this study would provide, there were probably a fair number of them that that sort of data would have been helpful as we were visiting with them. Now, each project is different. They're asking different questions, but at the same time, if we had been contacted by one of those, or if we had contacted them, if they were in our recommendation that, that this feasibility study would produce, we would be able to show them information tailored directly to what they do. Because the, the information that we've got now, we've got a lot of information, this would just help us narrow the focus a little bit, so that we're just giving them the information that they want.
Also says in this Exhibit A, work with Limelight Marketing to create a target brand. What, what would that cost us?
Not sure just yet. I think that will probably be determined by exactly what we need from Limelight Marketing, I think at the minimum. What, what we want to do is be consistent with our branding. I think Brandy Johnson with, with Limelight would tell you that's extremely important, making sure that the information that we convey, the communication we have with these prospects is consistent, and that a lot of times, a prospect will judge, I guess, the sophistication of your community based on the marketing materials that you use to promote yourself. So Brandy will be able to help us make sure all that is consistent, it's well-branded, but I don't have a dollar figure for you at this, at this time.
I've asked you this before, Blake. How much of your time is dedicated to economic development for the city, and how much of your time is dedicated to Chamber Commerce work?
I would say ninety to ninety-five percent of my time is dedicated to economic development.
Thank you, Blake.
Yes, sir.
Also, I appreciate what you've done for the city in the past two years, but in my opinion, I feel economic development should be one hundred percent of the time for the city, and that person should be an employee of the city. That's where I stand on this. Any other questions for Blake?
The figure you had mentioned earlier, the forty-five and the fifteen, I'm just curious, is the fifteen, like, clerical stuff that the chamber does?
Travel. Like, here in a couple of weeks, I'll attend a Site Selector Forum in Chicago. So it, it covers things like that. When we are, when we're courting a prospect, if there's communication, if there are postage, if they come to town and we need to take them to dinner, it, it helps us cover those sorts of costs over the course of the year.
Sure. Okay.
Are there any other questions? I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
And move to approve. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time. Aye. Motion carries four to one.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Thank you, Blake.
Dig for second city commission meeting in December. The second city commission meeting of, of December is scheduled for to the December twenty-second. Discussion is needed to determine if the city commission members prefer to hold the meeting as scheduled, or to cancel the meeting scheduled for December twenty-second and reschedule the meeting for an alternate for an alternate date. I have no preference. 22nd is fine with me.
Darren, do you see anything pressing that we couldn't take care of in the first meeting of the month? Huh?
Cancel it.
We can cancel it, we don't have to have to.
No, with our staff, I think we could do whatever we needed to do. I mean, we could, we could do it all on that. You're saying, could we do everything for the rest of the year on the 8?
Yes.
Start waving if you can.
I don't see anything that, that we couldn't pull off at one meeting.
If something did come up, we could always call a special meeting or something.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Jeremy, do you have a preference?
That's cool with me.
I'd move to approve the cancellation, the second meeting in December.
I'll second.
Move and seconded to cancel eight, cancel the second meeting in December. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four, zero. Non-agenda reports and requests.
I don't think so. Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. I am so sorry. Go ahead.
I wanted to let the commission know that we are going to have a ribbon cutting for Quincy Street. We're going to have the Secretary of Department of Transportation for KDOT come down on December 10th at 9:00 a.m., and we'll be sure to spread out, or provide invites and let you know of what and how that will proceed. But just wanted to let you know that the street's open, we're excited, and we're able to get the secretary to come down there and help us celebrate this.
Would you say the date again?
Uh, December 10th.
At 9?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations on the completion.
Thank you.
Can't believe it's done.
That one actually got done early, because that would be December, didn't it?
Yeah, they stayed on, I mean, they didn't go over. The contractor finished within their days, it just felt like, in the last month or it felt like it took a long time. Karen was really bird-dogged that, he's done a heck of a good job, he really has. I had some issues with him.
Entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Is there a second? And you leave for second, all in favor, to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.